I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome everyone this evening to the Monday, March 24, 2013, meeting of the Williamson County Board of Education. Before we get started, I'd like to ask you to please silence or turn off your cellphones. First item on the agenda is the pledge. If you would please stand and join Board Member Vicki Vogt for the pledge, and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and before we do that, we have several replacement pages at your places this evening, board members. You have a replacement page for page 21, which is Board Policy 1.703. The changes are made on lines 22. This was based on the conversation that we had at the work session. We also have a replacement page for page 69. This amends the open zone recommendation, and that information is on the back page, which is actually on page 70. We also have a replacement page for page 71. These are some changes made to the zoning parameters for the new schools, based on the conversation of the board members at the work session. And Mr. Anderson has requested that we move on consent, Board Policy 4.6051, credit requirements for graduation. This is on page 25, and we will move that to unfinished business. Are there any other corrections before we move forward? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda? Motion for Mr. Welch, second for Mr. McLaughlin. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. As part of that approval, the board approved the minutes from the February 17, 2014, meeting and the March 1, 2014, meeting. We approved Board Policies for Second Reading, 1.703, School Attendance Areas, Zoning, and Non-Resident Students, 4.605, Graduation Requirements, and 5.113, Professional Development Opportunities. This is a deletion of that policy. We approved the field trip fee request and the City of Thompson Station request for a construction easement. The next item on the agenda is public comment. We have three individuals that have signed up this evening to address the board. When I call your name, if you would please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You have a minute and a half to address the board. Mr. Anderson, who sits to my right, is our timekeeper, and he has some cue cards to keep you on task, and when you hear the timer go off, if you would please conclude your comments and take your seat, we appreciate it. First individual is Amy Baldarama.
Thank you. My name is Amy Baldarama, and I live at 5311 Leapers Creek Road in Franklin, Tennessee, and am a resident of Williamson County and a parent of a child in the district. I'd like to encourage Williamson County Schools to participate in National Healthy School Days on April 8, 2014. Nine out of 10 school occupants nationwide are women and children. Over 55 million children and 7 million adults, or 20 percent of the U.S. population, is in schools every day. Classrooms are more densely occupied than offices. The Institute of Medicine reports that polluted indoor environments are already damaging the nation's health and learning, and recommends preventing exposures to health-harming substances indoors. It is estimated that 50 percent of schools have indoor pollution problems that are largely avoidable. Our schools have not been environmentally responsible to the most vulnerable occupants, children and women of childbearing age. Times are changing. Many health organizations are encouraging state agencies and local schools to take action to provide healthy environments for children. We save money through prevention, which is good for education and health. On this 12th anniversary of National Healthy School Days, April 8, we want to thank some of the schools for the work they are doing and encourage others to provide healthier, greener places for children and teachers. We urge the school district to take part in this national event for healthier schools, to focus on the health and well-being of students and teachers as they make decisions on cleaning, maintenance, repair, and construction for the upcoming year, to use and implement free online guides available through such organizations, such as the American Lung Association and the American Pediatrics Association, for safer indoor air quality in schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Daniela Martinez.
Hi, I am Daniela Martinez, and I live in 498 Essex Park Circle, Franklin, Tennessee. Good afternoon. My name is Daniela Martinez, and I am a senior at Franklin High School. My family and I are Hispanic immigrants who have been renewing our visas annually for the past 10 years to maintain legal status in the U.S. We're currently waiting for the label department to approve of our case, among many others, so we can start the process to file for permanent residency. This process can take anywhere from two to five years, plus another five years or more, to get citizenship. Although I am not a U.S. citizen, I consider myself America, because this is my home. However, as a legal resident but not a U.S. citizen, I am limited by the law. I am not eligible to work because I don't have a social security number. Now that I am ready to graduate and continue my education in college, I realize how challenging it is to afford a secondary education without being eligible to receive financial aid and state tuition and the majority of scholarships. In addition, illegal immigrants are receiving help through the Dream Act, which allows them to get social security numbers, scholarships, financial aid, and in-state tuition in some states. I am truly delighted to see the benefits that illegal immigrants are receiving through the Dream Act, but I also notice that immigration process for illegal immigrants is now easier than it is for legal immigrants. I have worked so hard to get where I am today, and it hurts to see that my hard work does not matter to obtain certain benefits just because I am not a citizen. Regardless of the circumstances, I continue the battle to overcome these obstacles and hope that one day I will be able to help those in the same situation as I am now. With this in mind, I kindly request for your help to obtain opportunities and benefits to further my education and reach my goals, as well as for all the other Williamson County students who are illegal immigrants. In addition, I believe a high school counselor with knowledge of those who are immigrants is strongly needed at high schools to help guide students with different situations. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, Chris Bosin.
Hi, Chris Bosin, 9646 Brass Valley Drive, Brentwood, Tennessee. I have two students at Sunset Elementary School currently. First of all, Chairman Anderson, Dr. Looney, I came directly from my son's civitan baseball practice, so I hope you'll forgive me not being in a suit and tie tonight. My family moved here in 2006 specifically for one reason and one reason only, and that's the great public school system that's offered in this county. And I'm very thankful for your attention to the growth of the county is experiencing and rezoning of the schools, building of new schools, and that continued effort. I have noticed in our neighborhood with the new rezoning that have been announced, some conflict about this. And one of the major points of that conflict is funding at the level when we're asked to invest in our child. What we're really asked to do is invest in our students, because when I give that $100 over, I know that it's not just my child who's going to benefit from the way the teacher uses that in the classroom, but the other members of that classroom, the classes that come after her, because that teacher will be having those needs met, then the wish list grows longer and things develop over time. So families that have been asked to rezone again and again recognize that when we open new schools, they're not at that same level. So let's think outside the box. Dr. Looney has done that since he's been here. Here's a proposal. Perhaps what we do is take the number of students who are rezoned. If it's 400 students going to be rezoned, we know how many years they've been in Williamson County schools. Let's say it's an average of six years. That's 2,400 attendance years. If you take $100 for each of those attendance years, which is what investing in your child is, it's a $240,000 seed money that could go to that PTO to make up that difference. Maybe it's not a perfect solution, but it's thinking outside the box and might address some of those concerns. And I hope that as it moves towards things like that, Williamson County Chamber partnerships, maybe there's a business hub at the new high school that addresses those things. So I hope when it moves along that we'll think outside the box that way. Thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am. Chair, board members, good to see you this evening. I am proud to report that we had school today. Everybody's back from spring break, or most people are back from spring break, and we had an uneventful school day, other than lots of learning taking place. I also want to make you just a friendly reminder and a commercial for the listening audience and viewing audience that this Friday, we will begin our first-ever Fine Arts Festival for Williamson County Schools, and it will begin at the Franklin Theater. There are still tables available, so if you want to sponsor a table, it's $400 for a table of four. And then the events will take off on Saturday morning at the factory all day. We'll be highlighting students in all disciplines related to the arts, musical performances, bands, choirs, some theater productions, some dance productions. So it's going to be a great day, and this thing is going to grow every year. So I hope that you have an opportunity to come out and participate in that. And then finally, I just want to make you aware of a mistake that I made, and I'm announcing it publicly, so I apologize. I need to confess. At the work session, I failed to put an item on the agenda that we've had some discussions about, and I know that the public is aware of those discussions, but I failed to put it on the agenda, and so I plan on bringing that to you during the month of April for your consideration, and that is, I have received again, a notice again, from the State Commissioner of Education that we could use up to two of our unused inclement weather days for professional development for teachers. There are some pretty stringent requirements as it relates to what we're able to do with those days, but as you know, you know, spending time with teachers, preparing them for all the changes that we're going to be engaged in next year with park assessment, Common Core, and our new scope and sequence guidance and that sort of thing, we just feel like there's some really needed time. Rather than asking for the two days, we have some principals that have expressed concern about losing two days, so I'm going to be recommending that we use one day at the end of the year. And so as it currently stands, the last student day is a half-day on May the 22nd. I'm going to be asking you in April to change that so that the last student day becomes May the 21st, and it too would be a half-day. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about that specifically, and once again, I apologize for not getting that on the agenda for your formal consideration this month.
Any questions for Dr. Looney? Okay, I see none. Ms. Birdsong. Mr. Welch?
Thank you. Dr. Looney, have you talked to the principals about this item? And if so, where are they in terms of their support or opposition to this plan?
Yes, sir. We've had several conversations. I'm blinking, I don't know why. Is that right?
Your phone.
Okay, I'm sorry. We've had several conversations with the building-level administrators over the course of the last two months, honestly. I actually asked this question of the commissioner in December, and we've been expecting the letter for some time, so this has been a source of conversation internally for some time. The principals, by and large, say that they need the time, that they believe that time would be well-spent in training teachers that last day of, you know, changing the day one back. We do have less than four principals that think that it's probably not the best use of time, but on the whole, most of the principals believe it's the right thing to do.
Okay, so over 90 percent then are four?
Yes, sir, and Denise and Donna were engaged in those conversations. They might be able to give you more information.
Certainly. As a follow-up then, instead of waiting another month, I'm wondering if we should vote on this tonight to give our parents the two-months' notice rather than just the one-month's notice? And I do know there's not agreement on this entirely, and I respect that, but I think it's in the spirit of the policy. We were notified about this at our, I'm sorry, not the work session, at the Policy Committee. It was announced at our Let's Talk Schools meeting. I think many of us were expecting to vote on this tonight, and so I think the concern that I have is we have, what, nine weeks left of school?
Yes, sir.
And so we're going to wait four weeks to actually make an official decision upon this, and maybe I'm bringing this up at the wrong time. If so, please let me know, Pat. But I'd like to make a motion to vote on this tonight and decide one way or the other.
Procedurally, with the agenda that we approved this evening, that item was not on the agenda. We approved the original agenda that we published, that we all received in our board packets.
Okay, so we'd not be able to add it on tonight then?
Correct.
Okay.
But since you asked that question, and you make a very valid point, and once again, please forgive me for that oversight, I do think it's really important that our community be informed of the intent, of my intent to make that recommendation to this body formally, even though you perhaps can't vote on it tonight, so that plans are, you know, I'm going to instruct the principals to begin shifting their plans, unless you have opposition to that recommendation, which I'd ask that you give it to me as soon as possible so I can, you know, see where the lay of the land is. But I'm going to ask principals to begin adjusting their calendars and their end-of-year events to accommodate that one-day early release for students.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
That answered my question. I look forward to the discussion at the next work session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wimberly?
Dr. Looney, are you asking for objections, if any, tonight?
I would love to have any objections that this body has to that tonight, so that parents and schools can begin processing the change, and that we just formalize it in April. If there's considerable debate or concern about it, then I'd ask that you voice that tonight, so that, you know, people walk away from the night thinking, well, it may not happen. But if you're silent tonight, the expectation would be that you'll support it in April.
Thank you.
Mr. Mizra?
Thank you. I actually am in favor of using the snow day for that. It worked well last year, and I will be voting in favor of it.
Thank you.
Of course, that's assuming we have no more snow days this year.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Hammond?
Well, Dr. Looney, just with that last comment, can you clarify that? So if there were to be more snow days or some sort, this would not still be on the table. I just want to make sure that whatever, I want to make sure we're clear with the public and they understand from going this point forward what is happening, what we're saying.
Great question. We'd actually have to have a snow week. We have four of our nine days left, and so I'm just going to propose that we use one of them at the end of the year. So unless we have three or more days that we need to take between now and your April meeting, the expectation would be that we adjust the calendar.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And just a follow-up. So then, if we don't take any sort of formalized vote tonight on this, then what sort of communication can go out? What would that look like to both internally and externally to the public, so they would be aware, aware potentially of this change?
We will, first, we will notify the principals to adjust their schedules and their end-of-year activities. We will ask them to communicate with their families, and then we will use the in-focus news article process to inform families of our intent to change the calendar in April. But once again, you know, you may or may not get feedback pro and con between now and then, and so I'm just encouraging you that if you have reservations tonight, voice them. Otherwise, people can expect that this is going to happen.
Thank you, and I am in favor of the snow day.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
Thank you, and I should have asked it before, I'm sorry, but just to kind of wrap up, Dr. Looney, if you could speak to what are the advantages and what is actually done during these professional development sessions? Why we would want to use one of these available snow days that we did not use for this purpose?
Well, thank you for your question, and I want to be clear. We're not losing in instructional time. What we're doing is we're using the time that we had already allocated for inclement weather, so it's not that we're not losing minutes of instruction that we had planned for instruction if we do this. There are a number, more than I can enumerate tonight, of new things that we have to begin training in immediately. As an example, we are going, as you know, we're going to a new student information system, a student management system called Skyward, and that's going to require weeks of training for our employees. And so what this would do is allow us to get a jumpstart at the end of the year to begin making that transition, so that teachers understand, perhaps from a global perspective, the changes they're going to be dealing with over the summer and into the next fall prior to next year. The commissioner gave some pretty specific language of things that we could do on those professional development days. It has to relate to Common Core, park assessment, our strategic plan, or the teacher evaluation process. So we believe the Skyward system relates to our strategic plan. It does, and so we'll be using that day for that specific purpose.
Thank you.
If I could just add, I didn't say this, I guess it goes without saying, in addition, it will save some money. We obviously won't be running buses that day. We won't be feeding lunches, serving lunches and breakfasts that day. Our utility bills, our water use should go down, obviously, if we don't have schools full of children. So that's not why I'm recommending it, but that's a byproduct of that.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Looney? Thank you, Dr. Looney. Move on to the student spotlight. Ms. Birdsong.
We are celebrating students and staff members from all across the county tonight, and we are going to start with the Tennessee High School Press Association Awards. Our first state champion, Best Online Video from Brentwood High School, Mary Margaret Davis, and Thomas Wolfe, Not Pictured, Cole Hubbard. And for Best PSA, also at Brentwood High School, Appicorn Brafatt, Ben Sherrill, and Sammy Edgerton. Best Sports Coverage, Brentwood High School, Hamza Hullett, Jake Fisher, Ben Sherrill, Appicorn, Hannah Fieldhacker, Connor Holmes, Andrew Hughes, Stephen Hart, Dakota Payne, and Katie Hart. Their teacher is Ronnie Adcock, and they also won for the Best TV Station. Centennial High School brought home three state championships, if you will call it that, for Best Music Video, Josh Katina, Patrick Mills, and Caleb Simmons. For Best Audio, Josh Katina. And for Best Commercial, Mylan Zanui and Patrick Mills. Their teacher is Don Merrick. Ravenwood High School won two awards, Skylar Raven for Short Feature, and Ethan Carlson for Best Videographer. Their teacher is Laura Faber. Now, let's talk about the Tennessee Technology Student Association Awards. For Music Production, Page High School, Julie Panic, Isaac Rizzo, Michael Lee, and Logan Harvey. Also from Page High School in Manufacturing Prototype, Chase Moon, Ben Wilt, Carson Stafford, Cameron Midget, Lilian Powell, and Ben Weaver. Chase Moon won for Flight. In Architectural Renovation, Braden Wells, Austin Buffalo, Beau Schaefer, Grant Santilli, Daniel Sokel, Raleigh Cochran, Wilson Cochran, Ashley Jones, and Ben Weaver. And then Wilson Cochran and Brock Bolton won for Transportation Modeling. Their teachers are Beth Foreman and Jimmy Baker. For Fairview High School, this is Blake McKinney, and Blake was elected Sergeant-at-Arms for the association for the 2014-15 school year. His advisor is Kevin Sizemore. Let's talk about the Tennessee North American Computational Linguistics Olympiad, and this is Christopher Nocastro from Ravenwood High School, and he is going to be one of two students representing Tennessee at the International Linguistics Olympiad. Anna Crombie is his teacher. And then first place in the MTSU Linguistics Olympiad, Zach Glick, Simon Lowen, Jordan Wajaja, Sean Yo, and again, Anna Crombie is their teacher. Let's talk about athletics. We had four state champion wrestlers, starting with Brentwood High School in the 145-pound category. Luke Hamilton, his coach is Joe Blair. At Franklin High School, Patrick Dooley won the state championship at the 160-pound category. Frank Barbary is his coach. Independence High School, Dylan Friesner, 106-pound category, Jared Grindstaff is his coach. And Ravenwood High School, Taylor Warren is the state champion in the 152-pound category. Josh Peck is his coach. We have four staff spotlights tonight. We are going to start with Ronnie Adcock, Brentwood High School, who was named the Tennessee High School Press Association Media Advisor of the Year. And Beth Foreman, over at Page High School, was named the Tennessee Technology Student Association Advisor of the Year. In the Fairview area, Tiffany Wilson Mobley, who serves Fairview Elementary, Fairview Middle, and Fairview High School, was named the Tennessee ESOL Teacher of the Year. And finally tonight, Kristi Newarth, Ravenwood High School, was named the Tennessee Geography Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to all of our students and staff members.
Thank you, Ms. Birdsong. The next item on the agenda is the Board Chairman's report. I'd like to start this evening by welcoming Rebecca Owens, who's our new HR Director, who's joined us for the first board meeting this evening. We welcome you and glad you've joined us. I'd like to congratulate all of our students who had their incredible artwork on display at the frisk. I hope everyone had an opportunity to get out and see that, and to thank our art teachers for their fine work in getting that artwork matted and displayed there at the frisk. We have an incredible group of students that are a part of the Habitat Club, and several weeks ago, the students from Brentwood, Centennial, Fairview, Franklin, Independence, Ravenwood, and Summit High Schools completed a new home in Fairview and dedicated it to the Pelfrey family, and they did an outstanding job. Additionally, the students at Summit High School won the Brentwood City Historic Commission Fourth Annual History Bowl, and also the entrepreneur students from Summit High School placed third in the Junior Achievement Company Program. Also, we had a number of students that performed very nicely at the Destination Imagination Contest, which was held several weeks ago at Brentwood Middle School. Brentwood High Senior Kerry Deese and Summit High School Senior Madison Blackstock were recently recognized by the Prudential Spirit of Community for their outstanding acts of volunteerism. And we have some members this evening from the Berry's Chapel Church of Christ Boy Scout Troop 130 who are here visiting, working on their citizenship and community merit badge. If you would like to stand and let us welcome you. Thank you for being here, and we wish you the very best with your scout work. Thank you for being here, and we wish you the very best with your scout work. Also, Mackenzie Puckett, who is a Franklin High School student, she plays on the Franklin High School Girls Basketball Team. She was recently named to the USA South Atlantic Conference Women's Basketball Player of the Year, which is quite an accomplishment. And that concludes my report, except we have several principals and staff members in the audience tonight. If you would stand and let us welcome you. Thank you very much for being here. We always appreciate your attendance and your support. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is under unfinished business. This is on page 25. It's Board Policy 4.6051, credit requirement for graduation. Dr. Looney?
Yes, ma'am. Chair, I do recommend approval as submitted.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Welch. Second from Ms. Vogt. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, as we discussed at the work session, there's just on line 50 of the policy where it says effective with a class of 2017, I would just like to have that part removed and put the word "or" in front of it. Or athletics for high school students which are under the management of a Tennessee not-for-profit entity and which are approved by the superintendent and other areas approved by the board. Just asking for that because as we asked the high school director to look into that, there was very little impact on any current students there that it would affect any GPAs. And I know that was the concern of the board. I'm just asking that every child who is participating in one of those sports, whether they be a freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior next year, that they get the same consideration that not just freshmen and sophomore would get. So, I was asking for an amendment to that part of the policy.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the policy. Second from Mr. Hullett. Mr. Welch?
Thank you. As Mr. Anderson mentioned, I think the objection to it was that we were sort of changing the rules midstream, so to speak, for the students. And there was the concern for kind of that admittedly very small group that you mentioned that was being very competitive for GPA and awards and their class rank or so forth with that, which was the reason why we wanted to do it at 2017, as it says here, to kind of start everyone over on the, you know, same footing as they move forward that way. That said, I absolutely see the merit in what you're saying, Gary, in that you're trying to provide a benefit to all these children. If this is something that we think is a good thing, provides more opportunity, then why not give it to all the students that way? I'm wondering then, as a compromise, if there's something that we could do, or not through policy, but through administration, whereas any student that has in these junior, senior classes, and I'm kind of springing this on you, so the amendment is kind of being brought up now. If we did make the change, as Mr. Anderson is suggesting, would it be possible to give the benefit of those doubt, the benefit of the doubt to those junior, seniors that had already taken a PE credit and had earned an A in the class, giving them the opportunity to take a credit rather than grade? So, they would not be negatively impacted if their GPA was over a 4.0 by only receiving a 4.0 in the class?
I don't think that would be consistent with policy. I think in this case, and Jason, you might want to weigh in, but I think in this case, the board's going to have to decide to either support Mr. Anderson's motion or stick with what you've been doing as a body. And that is, when you make a change to academic standards, you start with the freshman class.
I understand. Admittedly, I've kind of dropped this on you at the last second. I haven't given you much time to think about it.
If teachers have already set grades in the gradebook, then they're set. We don't have the power to change those. That's actually the professional discretion of the teachers. And we can't, even at a higher level administratively, make that change.
I understand. Thank you.
Ms. Mills?
I have a couple of questions about the impact, although it may be negligible to some students with this specific issue. The way that this board has operated, when there have been changes to something that affects students as far as a graduation requirement, we have not in midstream changed directions. And I have a concern that by, even though the impact may be negligible, I think it opens the door and is not consistent with what we have done in the past and what we may potentially need to do in the future when we're implementing new graduation requirements. And so, I don't think that I'm going to be able to support this.
Thank you. Mr. Hullett?
Thanks. Do we have any feedback from school level?
Well, we didn't ask what their preference was. What we asked was, we answered the question about whether it would have a significant impact on the academic standing of existing students. And the answer was, as far as the number of students go, the answer is no. But as Mrs. Mills pointed out, for a particular student, it could have an impact on a student when you look at it at the micro level. But the number of students that it would affect would be minimal.
Mr. McLaughlin?
I think Gary has a really good point, and I'd like to support what he's saying. I think it affects very few students, as we talked about in the work session. And it expands the students that would be happening right now, not just those graduating in 2017. So, I'm going to support this amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I understand Janice's point, because I've been here a long time, I understand that. What I'm looking at is what's in the best interest of the children who have an opportunity now to, rather than take a PE class, who are already doing multiple physical things outside of that, have an opportunity to take an additional class. I think they're missing that opportunity if we don't allow them to do this. And there's half semester credits that they can take. And that's where I'm coming from on this. I'm not trying to impact the GPAs. I'm not trying to impact and change the rules in midstream. What I'm saying is, we're giving students the opportunity now to take some additional classes because they are already getting more physical activity than they would in a PE class in a school, because they're working every day after school for multiple hours and on weekends and things. And that was my angle on this whole thing, was not to disrupt what we've been doing all along, but to open the opportunities for the kids who are already and have been doing this for years. That's where I'm coming from. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mills?
I understand that, Gary. We all want to do what's best for kids, but we also have to do it in a methodical way that doesn't impact students. And I'm just asking, you know, Dr. Looney, you recommended the approval of this policy as it was without the amendment. And what is your recommendation since the amendment has been made? Do you want us to do this? Is that your recommendation or not?
My recommendation is the policy as it was presented to you tonight.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Does everyone understand what the amendment is? The motion passes. So, we're back to the main motion as amended, which is to approve the policy for second reading with, as amended. Are we ready to vote, or is there any further discussion?
The amendment was to, on line 49, at that last comma, the next part would be "or", and then remove effective with a class 2017 athletics for high school students, and move to which are under the management of Tennessee not-for-profit entity and which are approved by superintendent and other areas approved by the board.
You're welcome. Ms. Vogt?
I'm sorry, I took it off. I asked him to take me off.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 1 no.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is under new business. It's item 3A. It's on page 43. It's the school board budget for 2014-15. We'll start with the general purpose budget on page 45. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am chair and board members. You've gone through the budget numerous times with us at this point in time. I do recommend your approval of the proposed budget as submitted. Mrs. Holman is here to answer any additional questions you may have.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Hullett? Second for Mr. Peterson? Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3A2. This is the central cafeteria budget on page 46. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am chair and board members. This is a self-sustaining budget. Do recommend your approval as submitted. Once again, Mrs. Holman is here to answer any additional questions you may have.
We have a motion for Ms. Mills? Second for Mr. Wimberly? Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3A3 on page 46. This is the extended school program budget. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am chair and board members. This too is a self-sustaining program, takes care of our before and after-school programs that are doing an exceptional job. Do recommend your approval as submitted. Mrs. Holman and Mrs. Goodwin are both here to answer specific questions you may have. Mrs. Holman on the finance side, and Mrs. Goodwin on the program side.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Hammond? Second for Mr. Hullett? Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3A4. This is on page 65. This is the capital outlay request. Dr. Looney?
Ma'am chair and board members, I do request approval of the capital outlay budget proposal as submitted.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Peterson? Second for Mr. McLaughlin? Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3B. This is the programming design of middle, college, high school. This information is on page 67. Dr. Wright? Dr. Wright up. Dr. Wright, can I interrupt you just a moment? Did you punch the button on your? Is it flashing red? Okay, now go ahead. Thank you.
Now it's red. Thank you. As presented at the work session, a couple of weeks ago, the committee met twice, March the 5th and March 12th, for consideration to present four recommendations to the board. And there was quite a bit of discussion. And so, without any further additions, I would like to put forth four names: Battlefield Creative, Academy Park Creative, Renaissance Creative, Pathways Creative, for your consideration to approve the naming of Middle College High School.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just add to that, the way this process will work, obviously, somebody's going to have to make a motion on a name. But in doing so, as you're changing the name of the school tonight, or as I think you'll change the name tonight, you're also approving the redesign of the programming of the school. The truth of it is, is middle college programming changed when it left the college campus in Nashville. And so, while the name hasn't changed, the programming has changed over time. And Dr. Bass is here tonight and has done a commendable job of thinking through, how do we create a thriving environment for students that have a little bit of a specialized interest in a high school experience? And so, I'm excited about that and excited to you giving an official name to this new program design.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Would someone like to make a motion? So, Mr. Gregory has made a motion to change the name to Renaissance High School? Well, we need to have a motion and a second. Okay, so we have a motion for Mr. Gregory and a second for Ms. Mills to change the name of Middle College High School to Renaissance High School. Correct? Is there any discussion? Ms. Vogt?
I'd like to make a motion to consider adding creative, Renaissance Creative High School. So, it would still be Renaissance, but adding the creative. So, do I have to wait for marks?
You can amend Mr. Gregory's motion
Yes.
to include Renaissance, to make it Renaissance Creative.
Yes. I would like to make him an amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second from Ms. Vogt to make it Renaissance Creative High School. Correct?
Yes.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Ms. Hammond? Mr. McLaughlin?
I think that the word creative in there, and we bounce this around at the workstation, we've talked a lot of different things, but I can support Ms. Vogt's adding this to the name because this not only came out of the committee, the committee was very supportive of wanting the word creation in there, creative in there. And Dr. Bass, that's what he wants. And he designed the program as we move forward, and I think we should support that. So, I'm very much in favor of adding creative to Mr. Gregory's motion. So I'm very much in favor of adding creative to Mr. Gregory's motion.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson, did you wish to speak to the amendment? Mr. Welch, did you wish to speak to the amendment?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
So, just thinking about this one, this one tonight for us to vote on, it almost looked to me like trying to fill out my bracket, which is a disaster, by the way, in that we had four general name options. I don't think there was any real discussion to go outside of the Battlefield Academy, Renaissance Pathways. In general, it seemed like there was consensus that we were okay with that. Where there was a lot of talk was whether we wanted to add creative to it, whether we wanted to put a high school at the end of it, whether we wanted to put an academy at the end of it. So when you start adding up these different options, with or without creative, a high school, academy, what have you, I believe we've got twenty options, twenty different variations on this. So there's gonna be a lot of opinions on this. I would just request that everyone sort of approach this with a little bit of compromise as we go forward. I don't know that, other than one person, they're gonna get exactly what they want. And ultimately, I would question how important is it? I think what's really gonna be important is the work that Dr. Bass is doing, the work that the kids are doing there. So unless you have just a really strong, strong opposition, you know, I think perhaps we need to be all a little open-minded on this one as we're going forward, whatever it works out to be.
Mr. Wimberly, did you wish to speak to the amendment?
Yes, and I think I'd like to speak to Mr. Welch's comment as well. Yes, indeed, it's going to be important for us to work together on this. But in the way that I look at it, we're not just naming a high school. We're actually branding the high school. And often branding is not best done through compromise. I think Dr. Bass has some creative ideas that he intends to put forward. I think that we, as a board, are very excited about it. And I think that perhaps, in the spirit of what he's proposing, maybe we, as a board, should be creative and take a little risk as well. I'm not in support of the name Renaissance for a number of reasons. As a branding guy, this is not an easy brand. I can almost bet that not everyone on the school board would spell Renaissance correctly at the first shot. I know Ms. Vogt adamantly disagrees with that. But I know I've tried several times, and I'm a pretty dead gum good speller. So Renaissance, to me, also is not consistent, if you look at the meaning of the word. And as I looked at it, you know, Renaissance is basically the rebirth of some old stuff that happened many years ago, where they started, after ignoring some of the classics, they decided that they would pay homage to some of the classics and brought them back, which was a wonderful, wonderful thing. But I'm not sure that this is consistent with the vision that Dr. Bass has. And, you know, to me, and, you know, this is somewhat of my background, you know, a good brand is a name that is easy to remember. It sticks in people's minds. It creates some discussion, maybe even a little controversy. It asks people to ask questions. And I personally, as you know, like the name Battlefield Creative, which I think does all of those things. It certainly is a bit controversial, as we already know. So I'm all in favor of the word creative. I'm not in favor of the word Renaissance. Do prefer Battlefield, if that comes to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Vogt, did you want to speak to the amendment?
If I may, I believe the choice Renaissance Creative High School does encapsulate the unique mission of this school. I think it speaks to the revamped programming that was outlined for us. I think it is one of the only schools that we have that we are actually housed in a building that we do not have ownership of. I don't have a crystal ball to know how this program is gonna manifest in the future, but I think it's problematic to name something location-specific when you're not sure that you're gonna be there forevermore. So my intention with the name Renaissance Creative is I think it does really encapsulate the unique positioning of these kids and their needs. And I happen to know that a number of the kids like that name. So I just wanted to speak to that, to both of the gentlemen.
Thank you. I wanna make sure before we move forward, Ms. Hammond. Ms. Mills, Ms. Hammond, you indicated you did not want to speak to the amendment.
Correct.
Okay, Ms. Mills? Okay.
I, as we all know, spoke against the word creative at our work session. And I did that for several different reasons, and I still feel the same way that I did about it. I think that there are several things that we have to consider. And I think one of them is that our expectation as a board is for all of our schools to be creative, and all of our students' opinions to be valued. And so I put, you know, a lot of thought about this, and I've talked to Dr. Bass about this. And I looked up the definition of the word creative, because I thought we need to know what creative means if we're gonna name something creative. And creative means to do something that's not been done before. Creative means to try and circumvent a situation. And so with the implications of what creative is defined by in the dictionary, it's really hard for me to support that word in our schools. And it's hard for me to support it, secondly, because I feel like all of our schools are creative. And I think that to imply that we only have one school that is creative doesn't say the right thing. And so I could support a lot of the different names, but I can't support any of the names that have the word creative in them. So that's where I am.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson, you did not wish to speak to the amendment? Okay, go ahead.
First and foremost, I just wanna thank Dr. Bass for the presentation that he brought, and make sure that he understands that the name of a high school is less important than the students in the high school, and I appreciate the work he's doing. I feel a lot like Mr. Wimberly with regards to the word Renaissance. I don't know that necessarily capulates the... I like the name Battlefield much better. I've spoken to that. I agree partly with Ms. Mills with regards to the creative aspect of it, with the idea that we are kinda putting ourselves in a different area by putting that word inside of a high school, in front of it. But I'm not going to support the Renaissance, just 'cause I don't feel that that really stands up to what I think is a better name. But I do want all of the students and those in the faculty, and certainly Dr. Bass, to know that what goes on inside the school is much more important than the name on the outside of it. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wimberly, did you wish to speak to the amendment?
Of course, Dr. Bass can speak for himself, and Ms. Vogt can as well. I don't think anyone has implied that by naming this school creative or School of Creativity, whatever, that that implies that our other schools are not creative. If our other schools were not creative, we would have, we would not have the accomplishment that we have throughout our school system. Matter of fact, if our school system wasn't creative, we wouldn't be able to produce the type of results we do, investing about the least of, at the lowest amount of most of the school systems in the state, as well as the school systems across the nation. But the truth is now that researchers, educators, business leaders will say that we are in a creative economy. When colleges are looking for distinctions between high-performing students, they look for creativity. When businesses are looking for make, or getting ready to make their choices, they're looking for creativity and problem-solving, according to many studies that have been done. And the truth is that, as I think we would all agree, creativity is not necessarily just art. Creativity is needed for virtually anything that we do. And there are specific ways to teach creative problem-solving and critical thinking. And particularly in the freshman year, Dr. Bass has some very specific plans for teaching these skills and unleashing the creativity of this group of students. And certainly, we have other initiatives throughout the schools that are to do the same thing. But it's kind of at the core of what he's trying to accomplish here, in my opinion. So I certainly like the word creativity or creative, and hope we will approve that. Thank you.
Dr. Bass, for all of the work that he's done and the vision and the mission that he's got for that program. And although I agree with Janice on many levels of what she said, one of the things that you said about the definition about creative in that it's something that's never been done before, this is something that's never been done before. It's something that we are working on. Being a trailblazer is hard. Being a leader is hard. Otherwise, everybody would do it. And the stakeholders, it's something that the stakeholders are asking for. And, you know, just by simple example, if someone would not have bought Edison's first light bulb, we'd be sitting here in the dark.
Thank you. Mr. Welch, did you wish to speak to the amendment?
Well, in the spirit of compromise, I could support Battlefield Creative. I think that's also a great name. I think we've got a couple of good options here. The only thing that I wanted to speak to is one, well, I think you touched on it. I actually did look up the definition of creative and Renaissance here. And dictionary.com, if you want to know the source that I'm using. Having the quality or power of creating resulting from originality of thought, expression, imaginative, originative or productive. So none of those really scares me off from the branding of what this school, what we hope it will be. It seems to go very well with that. As for Renaissance, a renewal of life, vigor, interest, et cetera, rebirth, revival. So again, I'm not saying that this is the choice, and it's better than Battlefield. Again, I can compromise neither one of these. I think we've got two great options here. But I do have to disagree with you on the sense that this would be poor branding for what the school is by the definition and the meaning of that term.
Thank you. And Ms. Hammond, you don't wish to speak to the amendment, correct?
No, it was already covered.
Okay, okay, thank you. So are we ready to vote on the amendment? And the amendment is, the motion is to add the word creative. So it'd be Renaissance Creative High School. Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is six yes, six no.
The motion fails. We're back to the main motion, which is to change the name to Renaissance High School. Is there any discussion? Ms. Hammond? Mr. Wimberly? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the motion that's on the floor, which is to change the name to Renaissance High School? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is seven yes, five no.
Motion passes. So the new name for Middle College High School will be Renaissance High School. Congratulations, Mr. Bass. Is he still out there? Okay, I couldn't see you behind the podium. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item three C. This is on page sixty-nine. It's the open zone schools for 2014-15. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am chair and board members. I'm gonna read my recommendation orally, just for public consumption. We are making the following recommendations for school to be open-zoned for the 2014-15 school year. First, Summit High School open-zoned to residents of the geographic area rezoned on November thirteenth, 2013, from Spring Station Middle and Summit High School to Heritage Middle and Independence High School. Second, open-zone Grassland Middle School up to twenty-five students from Brentwood Middle School to residents of the geographic area rezoned on November thirteenth, 2013, from Lipscomb Elementary to Walnut Grove Elementary. Next, open-zone Edmondson Elementary up to twenty-five students zoned to Lipscomb Elementary School for the 2014-15 school year. Next, Crockett Elementary up to twenty-five students from any WCS school with first priority given to students zoned to Lipscomb Elementary School for the 2014-15 school year. We're also recommending open zoning Page High School for up to twenty-five students from any WCS school with first priority given to students from Ravenwood High School. Recommending Heritage Middle School be open-zoned for up to twenty-five students from any WCS school with first priority given to students from Spring Station Middle School. We're also recommending that Trinity Elementary School be open-zoned for up to twenty-five students from any WCS school with first priority given to Clovercroft Elementary and College Grove Elementary School students. Winstead Elementary School is being recommended for open zoning up to twenty-five students from any WCS school with first priority given to students from Oakview Elementary School. Grassland Elementary School students open-zoned up to twenty-five students from any WCS school with first priority given to students from Scales Elementary School. We're recommending that Independence High School be open-zoned for up to twenty-five students in addition to the students that we had already named from any WCS school. We're also recommending that Summit High School be open-zoned to students from any WCS school. Fairview High School be open-zoned up to twenty-five students from any WCS school. Fairview Middle School up to twenty-five students from any WCS school. Fairview Elementary and Westwood Elementary School open-zoned for up to twenty-five students from any WCS school. In addition, I am not recommending that any WCS school be open-zoned to any FSSD students. You might note that this list is fairly long, and that is a result of the change in the Tennessee code that requires us to publish... that requires us to publish listings of student schools that have availability. And we are calculating in that availability our prospective growth in the year ahead. Do recommend approval of these schools as submitted.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Would someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. Gregory, second from Mr. Mesra. Is there any discussion? Mr. Gregory?
Dr. Looney, you haven't been here as long as I have, but for years, I've argued to open-zone schools. And I've been a big advocate of it, and I believe in giving families a choice when possible. I know this puts a bit of a burden on some of our staff to manage this, but I'm appreciative to the state legislature for forcing our hand, so to speak, and opening up some of these doors and seats.
I agree. It's a good thing.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3D. These are the zoning parameters for Nolansville High School, Mill Creek Middle School, and Mill Creek Elementary. This information is on page, the new page 71. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. This comes as a result of the discussion that we had at the work session. I am recommending the following zoning parameters to be established for the initial enrollment for the three schools mentioned. Nolansville High School, Mill Creek Middle School, and Mill Creek Elementary School. The parameters suggested would include: Plan for opening Nolansville High School with freshmen and sophomores only. That is consistent with what we have traditionally done. Establish zone lines for the new schools with growth in mind, understanding that the Nolansville area is growing by leaps and bounds, or I should say, homes and children. Plan to minimize future rezoning in the area, so that this zoning lasts from three to five years. Plan for efficient bus routes, so that each route is less than one hour each way. And do not base zoning decisions on city limit lines and/or zip codes. Do recommend approval of these zoning parameters, which you discussed at the work session.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. McLaughlin? Second from Mr. Anderson? Is there any discussion? Mr. McLaughlin?
I agree with this. But, Dr. Looney, I would hope that when these two, this one passes and the last one passes too, that we can get that on our website, so that people will know what these, both the parameters and the open-zone schools are going to be.
We will accomplish that first thing in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wimberly?
That's a nice segue to my question. At what point should, will the board see the recommended rezoning? And at what point then could the public be able to, well, at what point will the public see it? And at what point will the public be able to count on that being the plan? Does that make sense?
I think you're inferring additional rezoning as a result of the opening of schools?
No, I'm referring to, we've given you parameters for rezoning for Nolansville.
Okay.
So, at what point would the, you know, that zoning be transparent to us and then to the public?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your question. As you know, staff and I have been working for weeks now on, based on the work session discussion that we had, and individual discussions that we've had. We will be presenting individual board members with a proposal within the next couple of weeks. It will be formally presented at the work session in April for your consideration. You may or may not decide to take it up as a voting item in April. You might delay it till May. But once I have met with you individually as board members to lay out what the proposal is, I would suggest that we begin having public discourse immediately thereafter.
So, April of this year is when it will become, when it will be published, let's say?
Yes, sir. I feel safe in saying that in the early part of April, you will have been exposed to the recommendation, based on the parameters that you've given me. Of course, you will not have voted on it yet, but that will give us the opportunity to go out and have community meetings based on the proposal prior to a vote.
And you're feeling confident that fall of '16 is the opening date? That's a question.
Yes, sir. I feel very comfortable with a fall of '16 as an opening date. Of course, you know, there's things that could happen, but I feel very good about it at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Hammond?
And, Dr. Looney, just to reiterate, that's the fall of 2016 for both schools, or all three, if you, elementary, middle, and the high.
Yes, ma'am. In our initial discussions, we had talked about opening the elementary school, middle school a year early. As you know, that hasn't worked out quite as planned. But I also feel comfortable that we'll be able to manage the student enrollment until the fall of 2016 for both schools, or for all three schools. But I will tell you that we are planning on adding portables to Nolansville to accommodate the additional classroom space they're going to need prior to the opening of the school.
Nolansville Elementary?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes.
Could I just make a point of clarification?
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure, I just want to take advantage of us being on TV tonight. I want to make, because you're getting lots of emails, and I'm getting lots of emails about the potential ripple effect of Nolansville opening. And so, just for public consumption, the way, if that happened, the way it would work is you would come together again and establish parameters for rezoning additional families if we were going to have some sort of ripple effect as a result of Nolansville High School or the other schools opening. So, we would repeat this process. So, I just want to make sure that, and I hope I articulated that well, but we would go through the zoning parameter process again if there were additional rezonings beyond the parameters that you've established for the opening of the schools.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Mr. McLaughlin?
Dr. Looney, in regards to that, the first thing people are going to ask is, if we're going to go through this again, why don't we do it all now? Or if, or when would the second time happen if we're going to be doing it into different sections? So, I think we need to, since we've made that statement, I think we need to give a little more clarification in that regards.
Well, thank you for the question and for the clarification. That's completely up to this body. You may be satisfied with the enrollment figures that are at all of our schools as a result of the three schools opening, and may not want to do any additional rezoning. Or you may direct me to continue to try to relieve some of the overcrowding that's remaining in the other schools. I would say that the reason that we're not doing, making any recommendation now is twofold. One, you haven't recommended to do that as a body. And two, it's still two-plus years before that school opens. And given the growth that we expect to see happening in the Nolansville area, I'm not confident in our ability to forecast with great certainty what the enrollment numbers will look like two years from now. We have projections, but if you remember what happened at Clovercroft Elementary School, once that building started being erected, there were houses that popped up everywhere. That school is now almost full. And so, school construction brings new residential development. We have, we know what subdivisions are planned at this point in time. What we don't know with great certainty is how quickly they'll fill up or expand. And so, I think we'll have a better idea of that once the schools begin construction, and we can see how quickly it takes off.
Just an addition on that, is what I hear then, when you make a presentation next month on the zoning, that could be part of the discussion? Or if not, then it would be a year later possibly that we'd be looking at it?
Well, based on the parameters that you've established tonight, what I will be bringing to you in April is a geographic area of students that will attend the new schools. So, I will propose this location, this geographic area, would be zoned from, most likely, Ravenwood to Nolansville High School. And that's all I will be bringing to you. I will be bringing a similar recommendation to you for Mill Creek Middle School and Mill Creek Elementary School. I will not be bringing any other rezoning at all to you, because that's not within the parameters that you've established tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hammond?
So, just for a little more clarification, now that we've said that, if there was then, at whatever point of time, a ripple of another rezoning with some sort of ripple effect, as it's kind of been referred to, again, these zoning parameters would be in effect for this rezoning that we're getting ready to do, meaning families that are zoning that had happened, they would be under this three to five years. They would not then all of a sudden jump into, let's say, the next year, there was this ripple effect. I just want to make clear that parents understand these parameters are going to be that, which is in effect, this potential three to five years, and what we're going to do within the next month or so.
This group is speaking like they've rezoned before. I wasn't trying to be glib. I was just trying to make humor. The answer is that this, these zoning parameters are mutually exclusive to this, to the opening of these three schools. Should there be any other ripple or domino effect, or any other need for rezoning of any students in this district whatsoever, you will establish additional parameters for that zoning that may or may not be the same as the ones that you've approved tonight.
Right, but the ones that are being rezoned in this next round, so to speak, would be under these parameters, three to five years of being in that same pattern.
Ms. Hammond, I can say with great certainty that the people, the area that I'm going to recommend be rezoned to the new schools will not be rezoned within that three to five window. Otherwise, I will have failed you, and you would need to fire me. And I don't want to be fired, so I'm going to make sure I do a good job.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Dr. Looney? Okay, thank you, Dr. Looney. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 3E. This is the Superintendent Evaluation Instrument for 2014-15. This information is on page 73. Mr. Squires?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board members. As you all know, under state law, annually, you have a duty to produce and provide a formal evaluation of the superintendent. As part of complying with that state law, you all have had ongoing discussions about what the evaluation instrument would look like. Before you tonight is the resulting evaluation instrument for Dr. Looney for this year. Staff recommends approval.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. Welch? Second from Ms. Mills? Mr. Hullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I've stated before, I think the vagueness of the document is to its detriment. There's no qualifying criteria that goes into it. And in my humble opinion, I don't believe that it is the evaluation of a CEO of an organization, especially one that leads the state and the region in the area of expertise. So, I will not be able to support this.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 10 yes, 2 no.
Motion passes. That concludes the business that is before this body this evening. Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank our security, Eddie Gully and Guy Whitley, for being here this evening. We appreciate your attendance, as always. Thank you so much for providing our security. There are no further announcements. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for being here.